I'm telling some of the presenters that come on that we're running a little bit ahead. So our next item would be an update on the ABC store proposal. Again, we're not taking any final actions today, but I know that Steve Mater and Kevin Benson are here to provide an update on where the ABC board and staff are on their proposed ABC store at the fire station. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve and Kevin, and we got a speaker's podium right there.
Thank you and appreciate you inviting us today. We have been working behind the scenes, kind of diligently trying to go forward and see where we are. Kevin has met with a potential contractor, and I'll let him talk about that briefly. And I'll just tell you kind of the finances as we get back into it, just to see where we stand and answer any questions that may occur.
Okay, we have kind of possibly backed off a little bit on the extension of the fire department in terms of coming out level with the edge here. So what we've come up with is this is going to save us probably three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in terms of construction costs by leaving a small courtyard here. And this, this is not, this is just a rendering. Basically, it, it's probably going to look a whole lot different than this by the time it's done. But in terms of use, it will reduce our costs a lot within, in terms of the roof structure.
The outside perimeter wall will not change.
No.
We were going to bring in the, the three bay, we were going to bring it out even with the front. Recommendation from the contractor who we've asked to look at it is, as Kevin said, is to not do that. Do not have to worry about the roof and extension, work on that, so.
Let me answer this question, cut down on your square footage.
About eight hundred square.
Yeah, about eight hundred square feet. Yeah. What, what basically we're going to wind up doing is utilizing more of this space.
We're going to utilize more of this, this space right here rather than using it as more for storage. It will become more of a.
It will become more of a showroom addition. And restructure that so that there again, it cuts down on costs. The only thing is that it's going to have to be built up according to the contractor. There's a, as Eric can tell, can tell you, it, there's a major height difference between
between this area and this area. This area right here where the three bays are, it's up, it's up because of the mysterious rock that's under it there. And so I think what we're talking about doing is raising.
Raising that.
Yes, and raising back here. Again, we're working with the contractor, he's come up with an idea from a mobility standpoint about as far as trying to move things around. And he's come up with a better idea, as we expect. We don't, we don't know that much about contractors, if you rely on the actual.
My next question, what is the estimate then with the savings? What do you, give us a ballpark figure?
We're looking at, the initial estimate came in at a little over a million dollars.
A million.
Six thousand. As opposed to one point five or one point six if we extend.
Out of this one right here.
Okay.
The majority of that price is going to be restructuring, roof.
Do you think you could use that space later on if you found?
Yes, that, that was, that was kind of the idea. At least we have this.
In our back pocket, you know, later down the road, if we need to, we can always expand out and create more showroom area if we need to. But at least this is still a play, you know, years down the road.
The, the key element to this whole thing, we've gone back and looked at a lot of financial. We, we're generating good return on our retail sales. And the one thing that we've got to deal with is we've got mixed beverage customers are basically forty-five percent or better. They're at least half, almost half of what we sell, and we need to have a better access for them to be able to pick up stuff, so that we're not outside in the rain and, and tripping over one another, running over the curbs and so on. And that's going to facilitate us by doing it on the, on the right-hand side, that's going to be dedicated to the retail store. The other thing from a financial standpoint is we've got pretty close to what is going to be the cost, construction cost, already squirreled aside. So within, as an estimate and estimate strictly, within two years, we're going to be able to start generating money back to the town. And we're looking at probably money back to the town in the range of four hundred and some thousand dollars a year or greater, depending on how things go. It's going to be, instead of us reserving the profits that we've done in the past, we're going to be able to now turn it over to the town for them to use, for the town to use whatever budget item that they need to. And also as a reduction of the rent, we're not going to have to be paying, quite honestly, you know, rent projected to go up double where, what we're paying now in this summer. So we want to try to exit on a timely basis. So, questions?
What's your annual dollar amount that you're putting back? Is it a set amount or a percentage or have you?
It's, it's determined by the auditor, and it is a percentage, and it goes up every year. Since 2015, it has gone up from anywhere from thirty-four thousand to last year, two hundred and ninety-three. Yes.
Whoa.
So, and that is in eight years, eight-year span. I'll just go ahead and tell you, we have eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars squirreled away in our building fund.
Yeah, I will say this, I remember when cashiers opened up their store.
It was panic.
We, we thought it was doom and gloom and, and you'd never recover.
Y K again.
Yeah, wow.
But no, we have, we have more than recovered since that. Cashers did not hurt us whatsoever. It, it might have affected us the very first year, but after that, it's kind of like a new restaurant opening in town. Everybody's got to try it. And then after that, they've realized it's not as good as what we were going to.
Now, part of that, that money that you contribute, there's a certain formula for our police in, in other programs that would remain the same.
Those are, those are set, those remain.
Okay.
Five percent, seven percent, we have to give five percent to law enforcement, seven percent to scholarship.
Counseling.
No, it's rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
Those are set itself by the state. So those initially have come off of the the debt profits.
So those will go up too?
Those, well, no, no, actually, those remain the same.
They stay the same, but there's more, there's more distributable income to the town.
But what goes up will be to the scholarship fund, to the general fund, rate department. Those, those are the ones that will go up.
We've, we've seen, and I went back and did some historical information. We're seeing at least a ten percent increase in bottom line profit every year. So it's, it's going up, it's going up. We're fortunate in that we're essentially the only game in town, and as such, as, as it goes up, you know, people come in, and if people come in, they need inventory, and we just don't have inventory. We don't have, we don't have space for inventory. That's our biggest issue. Plus the, being able to, you know, back in, what was it, fourteen, I think the town made a decision that we'd squirrel money away just for this purpose and this purpose alone, and that's why we've got the eight hundred plus thousand dollars sitting in the reserve right, right currently.
One other, let me bring up one question. We, we're in the long session with the North Carolina Legislature. You know, from time to time, I hear talks about reforming the ABC system even to potentially eliminating it. Have you heard any discussion about that, Kevin? I know you're active in your association.
That gets brought up every couple of years, and it usually gets shut down. The ABC system is such a cash cow for North Carolina, I don't know that any, any time in the near future that's going to be actually done.
Okay.
I have actually been elected to an advisory committee to the commission, and so a lot of that is going to be talked about over the next probably year, year and a half. I, I really don't see that coming down the pipe any time soon.
Okay.
Your proposed plan there, I saw some parking places, are those essentially already? I mean, is that just a rendering at this point?
This is just a rendering, Buzz. Yeah.
So we don't know any parking places for there?
No, no, there's at least eight or ten, I would say, probably in the front.
Yeah, we've at least got one for each door, and there, and there's seven doors right there, but we at least got that much. And, you know, as Ryan can tell you, this parking place out in front of those doors are a lot wider than the normal car space, I believe.
Yes, I know. There's more space between them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Square footage, total square footage increase moving here with the gamma, what part?
Two thousand. Two thousand square feet, yeah.
Oh, wait, yeah.
It would. Yes, yeah, it would, it would give us about.
The showroom would, the showroom would stay roughly the same, but the biggest increase is the warehouse space. And that's where, that's where I needed.
Yeah, it would give us about fifty percent more space than what we got now. It also is from a safety standpoint, you know, it's, I, I think some of you have been there to see what it looks like. We've got stuff everywhere. And we got people bending over three times to get something that they should only have to reach up here and grab off once.
When do you think you'll have a completed revised drawing of the front and so that you could share with us?
Soon as we are told to go.
Could you bring that back to the next board meeting in a week?
Should be able to. Yes, I'll make every effort.
All right.
We've got architects on, standing by, and we can, we can take that and modify it.
Okay.
Kevin, how many total square foot is that building? Do you, I should know the answer to that.
We had it.
Six, seven, ten. Yeah. Six, seven, ten. We are, in our current building, forty-two, forty-five, forty-two to forty-four, something in that neighborhood. So yeah, it's at least two thousand square, a little bit.
Any other questions?
Buzz, what do you think downtown real estate? Two million dollars? More than two million.
We don't have.
Wow.
This, this. I mean, we, we could work off the old.
Pretty close.
You're talking about Main Street real estate, yeah. Okay. We will, we'll put this on the agenda for our next board meeting, which will be next week. That's why I was asking about that. In relation to this proposal, we will be also having to look at the situation with the playhouse. Josh, you want to brief us on where we are on, on the theater and the playhouse and their plans and just briefly?
The playhouse will be in the building through June, and they are getting everything together inside now and just packing things up, and they will be doing that over the next few months. And they'll be there through probably the middle of June, moving everything over to the pack center. We went in there with one of the board members. They'll basically be taking their equipment, their lighting within, which this is the, you know, the the lighting that they need to, I guess, carry over to wherever they're going at the pack center. So they don't have to purchase that. The lights that's in there, all the lights that light up the seating area are still there. Up on the stage, there's lighting there. If anything is going to be done on the stage, the town would probably need to come in and put some fluorescent lights up on the actual hangers that are up there now. Those will all stay. Probably wouldn't cost very much to do that, have it to light the stage up enough to, to have any type of board meeting or, or whatever, if you wanted to do that. But anyway, they'll be there through, through June.
Okay.
I asked about letting the building official inspect it, see what was saying?
He was there yesterday. We had a person, a fire inspector there yesterday. So we went through everything. He didn't have an issue with anything. He did say when we have an electrician in there to put some, some lighting up, like I was just talking about, is to make sure that he checks all the emergency lighting. And if the batteries are dead or the bulbs are out, to have all those, you know, brought up to the current. But other than that, he said it should be fine. Fire inspectors are all good. He says as long as, you know, state assembly didn't completely change the use, which I don't see it doing that.
Did he go downstairs?
Yes, I opened it up and showed him everything.
He was okay?
Okay, all right. The other item we have is Mirror Lake Restoration Project update. I asked Pat Gleason to come and, and give us just a, a brief update on where the Improvement Association is on this project.
Thank you, Mayor. You notice my new footwear here?
Do you need to sit down?
No.
Okay.
But I blame this on Lester. Because I decided to play pickleball for the first time. Maybe my last time, and ruptured my Achilles tendon, so. But I'll be back, Lester. Thank you. I couldn't help but overhear the liquor store conversation. Most of you know I serve on the board at the chamber. And we've been wrestling with our lease over there. So my idea at the last board meeting was, why don't we just put the chamber in with the liquor store? And we could solve the whole issue right there. But anyway, thank you really from the bottom of my heart, or should I say the bottom of the lake? Because I've had this opportunity to attend this town retreat now two years in a row. Last year, we had a little technical difficulty, so I'm really blessed to come before you for the third time in twelve months to sort of talk about the lake. And I take that as a huge compliment, as well as I think it represents to the citizens of Highlands the importance and the town's commitment to really help save Mirror Lake. It's been our mission to do that for the last three and a half years since I became involved, and you guys have been a, a big supporter and listener, and that's all I've asked at this point. Over that time, especially since I came before you last St. Patrick's Day at the town board meeting, we've made a lot of progress, and it's my pleasure today to update you on that progress. It's very fitting that we met last year on the St. Patrick's Day, because the mayor has kind of been like St. Patrick as he's advised us and very collaboratively helped us with the local and sort of the state part of this solution. So I, I can't thank you enough. So for the next fifteen or twenty minutes, let me just kind of share our progress. And then I'll finish up with a, a specific request from the town for you to consider, and then hopefully leave time for a few questions. I'll begin with one kind of big thought. I truly believe that our collective efforts to save Mirror Lake are really more about preserving and protecting the entire Highlands watershed and the quality drinking water that's become synonymous with living in Highlands. Not to mention the recreational and natural resource assets of saving Mirror Lake. If you remember our three-phase dredging plan, if I can get this to, here we go. Starts with a phase one piece, and that phase one piece can be done two hundred and fifty yards upstream from the bridge, two hundred and fifty yards downstream from the bridge, and a deepening of that section of water for between eight and ten feet. And that can be accomplished for between four and five hundred thousand dollars. Phase two, if you remember, takes that section and widens and deepens the two channels that flow out of Mill Creek around that island, that large island that's formed over the years due to sediment for a cost of around two to two point five. And then phase three, let me get this thing to back up. Phase three pretty much picks up upstream from the phase one piece all the way to roughly Big Pine Acres and downstream around the bend down towards the dam. So if you add all those numbers together, that's how I get to my four to five million dollars. Our permit status. Thanks to our private fundraising efforts since the last time we met, the Highlands community, the residents of Mirror Lake, Miramont, Colosseum Heights, Dobson Ridge, river, river lakes, and I'm missing one of the other subdivisions, but that collective group, along with some private fundraising, we've raised enough money now to begin phase one. Our dredging partner is a company that some of you are familiar with called River Sand. We have paid them an amount of money so that they can secure our dredging permit. They also are employing engineering studies and, and doing all the requisite work that we need for that piece. I think once we get that permit and they think they'll have it to us within a sixty or ninety day period, we can go ahead and begin dredge, begin the phase one dredging. The phase one dredging, guys, is a real collaborative, and let me explain why. We've I was invited to speak at Rotary a couple of months ago, and following that meeting, I was approached by Bryson Grading. And I've always wanted to seek a local partner in, in helping us get this done, and I've met with Ryan and Justin a few times. We've walked the lake, and we will be using Bryson dredging for certain pieces of this. For example, River Sand needs to haul that material from phase one. We're working with Bryson to determine places where we can go ahead and, and deposit that sediment. But they've been very helpful in the process. So just to update you a little bit, phase one, the goal has been reached. The overall goal is much larger than the phase one piece. I recognize that. And last October, the mayor invited me to his coffee where Mr. Corbin and Mr. Gillespie attended. And we were able to grab those guys and meet with them for about an hour at the Mirror Lake Bridge and walk through our entire plant. And I think we've got some momentum now with the state thanks to Pat and some follow-up meetings that he's had to have the state participate. One of the requirements, if we are to get that, that kind of funding from them, is that we plant that deposit of whatever it is, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, with the Town of Highlands along with our permit. So we would technically hold that at the town, and the town would then release our funding to our dredging department. Am I correct in summarizing that?
They would give the money to the town.
Correct.
Correct. The state would.
The state would. So those meetings are going along well with the state. And the other part of the fundraising is I've got some major donors and some people who really want to give, and we've been getting denominations of between a hundred thousand, we did have one at two hundred thousand, couple of twenty-five thousand dollar donations, and then a whole bunch of smaller ones from the, from the community at large. But there's a lot of people that are kind of holding out until they actually see a shovel hit the water. Hey, Pat, we'd love to participate. We think this is a great thing for the Town of Highlands. But until you start, you know, we'll pledge this amount in phase one, this amount in phase two, and this amount in phase three. So there's a lot of pent-up giving that hasn't been realized yet, and I wanted to share that with you as well. My proposal today for the town to consider is would there be an opportunity, perhaps in this year's budget, to have a line item amount of money from the town to help us put this thing together? I realize both in meeting with the congressman and the senator and the pack that until there was some local skin in the game on this, people would be hesitant to participate. But now that I feel we're at that point, I respectfully request that the town consider an amount of money. I penciled in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Maybe that's overly aggressive, but I'm in the real estate business and I like to ask for the, for the, for the bucks. After that, you know, if, if, if you can see the value in helping us get to our initial four to five You know, i- if, if you can see the value in helping us get to our initial four to five million. I really believe we'll be at a point in future years when some maintenance dredging will be required. To be able to really fund that through private sources. Lamar and I have talked a little bit about, you know, could we get the town involved in some maintenance dredging if we had some catch bases, basins for sediment? And those could periodically be dredged. Anyway, that was my, that was my thought on that. Uh, and I realize that some of that's got to be discussed at a later date. But in closing. I just wanted to sort of yield to the group here. To walk me through a process whereby we could get some town funding to kind of help us, especially in this, in this initial goal of four to five million. So that's my update. Like I say, a lot of progress has been made in the last year. And uh, I'll just open it up for any questions.
Let me, let me just add, I, I am optimistic that the state's gonna come through. With some contribution to this project. They did it for Lake Junealesca.
Right.
So that's kind of the model that we're following. I think that's possible. We haven't even touched um, any potential federal resources down the road too. And then, you know, and I will just say this, I, I think as a, a community and, and as the board, we, we need to be a, a significant partner in this. And you know, we've talked about this for years and years and I will say to Pat's credit. Everybody was talking about it, nobody, you know. Got committal of, of money and, and you know, I'm really, I salute you for getting that money for that first phase, so. I think we, we're making progress on, on preserving Mirror Lake and not letting it erode into just a marsh or a bog, so.
Yeah.
Also, it opens to everyone, anybody that'd like to ask questions. Make a comment.
Well, one of the strategies we've discussed, and I think I've touched on this maybe with Josh and Lamar is if we can get catch basins upstream in the upstream areas, for example. That picnic table area where everybody meets on Friday nights and has a glass of wine up at the, the bridge there on Colosseia. There's an opportunity to there, up there to take a bay, widen and deepen it and put a it's not a dam, but it would be a, a, a Bryson came up with the idea of putting a almost like these road girders there. And what would happen is the water hits it and as it falls over that. The sediment drops into the bottom of that bay. That would catch a lot of it before it continues downstream into the lake. If we could do a similar thing up towards Big Pine Acres. Then the maintenance camp would be to go and empty out those basins. Maybe on an annual basis, just to kind of catch as much of it as we can. You're never going to prevent all of it. But that would sure help.
And, and I'd, I'd add, you know, Mirror Lake was created some seventy years ago. And not pointing fingers, but I think people that, okay, we put up a dam. Don't have to worry about it. Well, it's an ongoing um, process and instead of letting it accumulate to a major crisis, I think, Pat, what you're talking about is ongoing uh, maintenance.
Right.
Of, of.
Probably be facilitated for fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you all for the way you handled these sewer breaches. Pat called me real early and said, hey, you should be proactive about this and communicate with everybody. Here's what's happened. Here's how we're handling it and um thanks to that kind of communication, I didn't get one call from a Mirror Lake resident. You know, ready to come up.
Pat, would you? You, you missed the Lamar's presentation, but we're talking about, uh, you know, again, paving some of the roads that cause um, erosion to, to wind up in the lake. That's on our budget agenda too.
Yeah, I mean, Colosseia is done, right?
Yep.
Looks great. You know. We don't. It would help us from a financial standpoint, but I wasn't planning on that.
So I guess the other question is, is in dredging. You're basically stirring up the bottom side. And it is in our wash supply line. Is there any anticipation or do you have any get into that section of Lexa that will facilitate them dredging and then all down the road?
Well, uh, I'm able to sediment is heavy to the water, so we stir it at the bridge. Yes. Followed by Now, as we hit the phase three, we can go closer to.
Well, that's funny, you can stir it up and then you just move it down.
Yeah.
You know, stir it up and move down. That's all. Uh, I mean, I don't know, I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but I'm just anticipating that as being. If there's a problem, we need to, a potential problem, we need to address.
Good question to ask your contractor and dredging guy.
The one thing that mitigates is the velocity of the water.
Right.
In which you're doing it. The fact that it's in a lake, it doesn't travel very far.
Right, you know, or a pool, it's still a lake and not a river.
Right. That's what he's doing, I think, is almost.
Access without distillation, it would be a lot easier for us. But it would make life easier. I think it makes life easier all the way, right? Yeah, based on what you're saying. I mean, it just makes sense.
No, something to do with the dam thing. Some kind of piping around the dam. But one thing with your dredging plan, were they going to use barges for transport?
No trucks.
But to get it from the lake to the bank?
Uh, yeah, that is one of their methods.
So keeping the water up. You have to keep the water up for that type. There's only so much you can reach with a long reach track of.
Yeah.
But there I remember at least at one time, it may have all been during this plan, but maybe a previous one. Where we're going to use basically an excavator setting on a barge to load another barge. And then get that transported to the bank, dipped out into a truck and haul it off.
Well, and I'm a, you know, split engineer or anything like that, but, but you start off and then it's still a light. You actually need yeah, let's start moving it because it just sends down in the second place, then if you lower the light. But the same amount of water or the velocity, I mean, in a narrower channel that you stir that up and that has more energy carries the sediment toward the bank. I don't know, I'm just saying. But that's what my question was, is it is in our water, water, water supply line? And so that is something that, that you need to be aware of because we've got sedimentation and we have to get out of our water for whatever quality, whatever sediment amount, those suspended toilets has to be, right?
I suspect if they have to get permits for whatever method they're doing. That the use of maybe curtain walls and so forth may be part of what the state will require.
For that purpose, right?
Perhaps.
I did not. The little pond on Miramont? Yeah, you don't want to use that net.
No. Yeah.
Did not work too well. Keep us posted. Oh, and like I say, I hope the um state will identify some funds in this session. Keep those cards and letters going to Raleigh.
In, in all of our water issues, whether it's grant money, whether it's Mirror Lake dredging. And we may already do this, but it really seems incumbent upon any project that we have that requires outside approval, which, which often seem to that we stress that we are at the top of the watershed. All the way to the frigging Mississippi.
We're the headwaters.
We are the headwaters. We affect everybody downstream. And to try to force that idea on everybody from the county to the, to the state, to the region.
Good point.
Part of everything that we say. We are your drinking water.
Good point. Thank you very much. Okay. Yep.
So I'm just, I did this. That, the sixteen eighty-seven that I showed you is in the plus, not the negative. So yes, we will be paying more for a hybrid and over the five year, and I sat here and done the math. It's about eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per vehicle per year if we stick with the hybrid and it's not a cost saving one for five. So it is, you're in sixteen eighty-six is for per unit.
So what does that mean?
It means.
We're, we're not saving by going with the arm?
Pay more going in to the hybrid than you wind up ever getting out in gas.
But you gotta think too, it's something I don't know yet. The maintenance is probably going to be less because the, the vehicle is not sitting there idling while we're running away for someone. It's good. And it's, and it's going green.
Yeah, with battery plugs, you're.
It's five year warranty. So we get sick. They're not in there, if I'm not mistaken, they're at a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles warranty instead of it remains at eight hundred and seventy-five bucks if you want to go for V six. Obviously, it's about thirty-eight thousand. Now, the forty-two thousand you saved was, I inflated it to thousand dollars for ten percent markup. The car is forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. The V six is thirty-eight thousand. So then with the difference of, like I said.
Keep hoping for global warming, so we're not sitting on side of earth freezing there.
Yeah, so um, at the next, whenever you decide, we'll also double there.
Let's wait until we start getting um, electric um, fire trucks. All right.
And go to Charlotte and see when they got one.
Well, we were at um. And I will say this, at the legislative dinner, we met a, a, a councilman from another community and he's in the school bus business, a top executive, and he was talking about school buses that are electric now. They cost four hundred and fifty thousand and then another hundred and ten thousand for the charger to fire them up overnight, so. Talking about a lot of money. Oh, but the world we live in. Okay, we're now at the wrap-up session. We're about on schedule. A little bit ahead of time, but I just wanted to thank our staff for all the great presentations that were made today. The food, the lunches, everything is always went um out very well. It's just wonderful day of, of, of us getting to have a conversation and learning about what are the needs for the town and how we will address many of those needs in the budget. And, and as I emphasize, um, what we're talking about today were just ideas. Our town manager and um, our financial director, I know they'll work with the department heads in drafting a proposed budget. We will be having more of these um budget workshops in the afternoon where, like we say, there's always the, the red line pen. If, if there's something that we just feel like we can't do this year or we want to carry it on to another year to bring the budget balanced and in line, we will, we will be doing that. So um, that's all I have to say, but I'm going to turn it over now to the the commissioners for their comments, their final comments and ideas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to look at the designing of water plant upgrade as soon as Lamar could get us a number. Ask Josh to put that on the agenda and talk about possibly proceedings since we can.
Free clarify our storage tank pump station?
Yes.
That'll be sometime next fiscal year if we approve the budget to do that.
I understand that. I was just wondering if as soon as you're ready, I'd like to talk about possibility starting earlier. But I mean, you know, in our, take a year design and permit, then you got to get land that'll take a year and two years to build. It's going to take a long, well, I know you hope to get any land, but I think we ought to go ahead and do the design as soon as we can.
I gave you another three looks.
So we'll move on then, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Town manager Ward, do you have any more comments?
I do not.
Well, then I will entertain a movement that we adjourned this retreat. All in favor, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.